Wait, you wanna get started? Yeah, absolutely. That's easy for me.
I'd like to call the order of the Wesley Town Council meeting for November 3rd, 2025. All councils are present except for Councilor Yellow, Town Manager, Town Sergeant, Town Clerk, Town Solicitor are all present. First is invocation with Councilor Van Dover.
Dear Lord, we come before you with a humble heart, seeking your guidance and grace. Grant us the strength to face the challenges ahead and the wisdom to make the right decisions. Fill our hearts with your love and your spirit and our spirit with your peace. Guide my steps and let your light shine through us in all that we do. Thank you for your unending mercy and blessings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Would you pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Next is recognitions, awards and memorials are none. Presentations. Item 3A, The Killer Want with James Grasso, founder. Mr. Grasso?
Thank you.
Sean, could you introduce this, how the presentation came to be?
Yes, well, this is James Grasso from Kilowatt. I had met with him, actually Councilor Salaber had, I guess he had reached out to her and she got in touch with me and I met with him and went through his whole program. And, you know, it's in, he'll explain it all, but it's an AI-based program, savings, so forth on the power side. It's an opt-in program. So, I mean, he'll go through the whole program with the council and get your thoughts on it, so.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Lacy. My name is James Grasso. I am founder of.
Sir, excuse me, I'm gonna, I wanna ask you to speak right into that mic because I have this thing right behind my head that's making kinda squeaky noise tonight, which doesn't always happen. So if you don't mind, I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Again, my name is James Grasso. I am founder of Kilowatt. A quick disclaimer, I am Italian-American, but I am not westerly Italian-American. I'm from Cranston, Rhode Island. I currently reside in Charlestown, by the way, full-time resident. I'm an energy professional. I manage energy portfolios for a living, commercial institutional portfolios, been doing that for 30 years. What I'm about to show you this evening is those 30 years compressed into about three years of taking my knowledge or expertise on purchasing energy, most notably electricity, natural gas, and condensing that into a formula, what we refer to as AI models, and make that available to the general public through a cloud-based application, which is called Kilowatt. Thank you for your time listening to me. So we'll get into this and we'll talk about a couple of things. I'm aware that you guys have been pitched or proposed on community energy. I'm not here to pitch you on community energy. I'm here to pitch you on what I would consider a next generation of community energy, using advanced logic to protect consumers and to exploit energy markets to extract more savings than what you have been presented in previous community energy presentations. So I wanna start off by talking a little bit about consumer challenge, you know, what this problem is about and then how we'll solve it. First challenge, as you can see here, these are Rhode Island Energy's last resort service supply rates. You guys are probably familiar with the CSO. You've got summer, you've got winter, very volatile prices, very expensive, above-market prices most all the time. So the consumer number one has to grapple with, if they're going to embark on solving this problem, leaving the utility finding savings, how do they do this? Second challenge is how to identify the alternatives to solve that problem. And what you see here are just some of the problems that a consumer has to face when they're looking at sourcing for lower electricity prices. What's the best time to do it? What's the best term? Will I save money? What are the terms and conditions I'm signing into? And obviously, any sort of industry with this sort of complexity is ripe for exploitation. And that's what we see in the market and have seen in the market for years. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what consumers want. As I mentioned, I've been doing this for 30 years, so I've got a pretty good feel for what people are looking for and have a pretty good feel for how to give them what they're looking for. What they want, first and foremost, is to know they're gonna save money. Fixed prices, overrated. People wanna know they've saved money. To what extent they will or have saved money, they wanna know that. And then they wanna spend as little bit of time as possible getting number one and two. Unfortunately, what they get in the market today, it is a limited choice of price. The utility gives you one price, community energy gives you one price for all intent purpose, which shades of gray with renewable energy. Or you could go to the market direct and roll the dice. And even at that, suppliers are typically showcasing the price in term that they want you to take and they can extract the most profit from you. Deceptive sales practice, this is a big one. This is a showstopper for most people. They don't wanna touch programs, they don't wanna touch retail energy because everything's a scam. A lot of them are scams, a lot of the direct solicitations people receive are scams. And the number one scam is they showcase price reduction as price savings. Meaning, you remember that picture I showed you at the first slide? Prices go up and they go down. In the winter, when prices are high, marketers will market savings for those prices, but you have to lock in 12 months, 24 months, 36 months to get those savings for the winter and then you give them all back in the summer. That's the number one scam. It's not transparent. And then lastly, in line with this, nobody provides savings analysis. Nobody actually shows how you performed a year later, two years later. They hope you forget this and you remember that you just saved money for that first month. So with that as the backdrop, we're gonna look at the basic alternatives that are in the marketplace and then I'm gonna walk you through a little bit about what Kilowatt can offer the taxpayer. Alternative number one, this is actually taken from the Rhode Island Public Utilities website. They simply showcase in a circa 1995 vintage website, a bulletin board of options. The consumer has it up to themselves to figure out which term is best. The terms are not apples to apples. The savings that they are projecting in here are actually inaccurate, if you can believe that. The state actually projects improper savings, which puts the consumer at more risk. Not a very efficient or current methodology to analyze prices. Number two, community energy. This is community energy in Rhode Island for seven municipalities. I believe a couple of more are gonna be jumping on that bandwagon. Consumer can save 2% versus the utility and lose on average 20%, 22% versus the market. So as I tell people, community energy saves the consumer from saving money effectively. If you look at this chart, the light blue is NextEra Energy's price since inception back in 2023. The yellow are the kilowatt offers, the low-priced kilowatt offers for the same period in each of those months, which represent the true marketplace. And you could see the massive differential between the market and what consumers are getting through their community energy program. That differential goes into the pocket of NextEra. That's just the reality. So NextEra Energy is cleaning house in Rhode Island. Alternative three, this is Kilowatt. Kilowatt is a cloud-based application. It's a dot com. General public can go there, create an account, it's no cost. And what Kilowatt does is it uses algorithms to first identify the optimal price offering that's available for a consumer by rate class. So if you're residential, it's looking for residential rates. If you're small commercial, it's looking for small commercial. If you're a mid-sized commercial, so forth. So I like to joke, it's kinda like a dating app for your electric bill, right? Your electric bill wants to find cheap kilowatt hours, this is it. So once it finds the optimal price, which you see in that first component on the left, it gives you some basic information, the term, where the market is. Market trades low. The idea of algorithms is to track the market. And when that market reaches the bottom third of the trades, you lock in. That's how you save money buying energy. It's just like buying stock in that regard, except you can't trade out of it at the retail level. You buy, you own it. So the algorithms are set up to track the market performance, which you see in the second section. And when that market hits the bottom third and we consider it from an algorithm or statistical basis that it's in a low, that's time to execute. And the application has capability to provide the individual, either the option, it can notify you via email and you could go in and you could select what it's already selected for you. Or you could actually have the application do the buying for you, which makes this the first of its kind. What we call an AI agent. AI agents basically will shop for you. It uses logic to go out and purchase things for you. So you don't have to remember when your contract's gonna expire. You don't have to worry about the contract rolling over to some market-based rate that's gonna cost you money. You don't have to worry about going back to the utility if that's gonna cost you money. The algorithm is always shopping and mathematically solving for the best offer. And that's what you see on the right. What we call non-stop shop AI, where you have two levels, just like autonomous driving, you have two levels of shopping. You can either get guaranteed savings versus the utility rate. As the utility rate gets published three, six months at a time, it finds offers. If it can find an offer that's less expensive, it triggers guaranteed savings. The second level is a little more sophisticated. It uses the forecasted savings analytics of the app to shop deeper into the future. So when the market hits lows, you grab that savings, lock in and bank the savings. Kilowatt only showcases savings offers. So if we were to look at the app tonight, for instance, and you were a residential consumer, there's no savings offers available. Small commercial, there's savings. Larger commercials, there's savings. The consumer cannot lock into a rate that is above the utility. It's impossible because the application does not display that offering. So a quick comparison of these different options to set up for you, kind of the strength of this technology. Rhode Island Public Utilities Commission, which is the equivalent to shopping yourself with a little bad information mixed in. You've got custom price terms, nothing, daily price updates, they're static. You do get supplier direct pricing with heavy margins. No performance tracking, no market alerts when the market's low. And there's no market order capability, what we would call AI. The community energy offering, it's got nothing, most all of those. They simply index to the utility price, discount it a fraction, 1% to 2%. Technically, they can state that they guarantee you savings versus the utility. Meanwhile, the market trades lower and you're missing out on all that opportunity. And Kilowatt's been designed to solve all of those problems, right? You have custom price terms. There's literally thousands of offers each day on this application that it is crunching to find you savings for your home or your small business. Every day it's updating, it's dynamic. Market goes down, you have access to that. Supplier direct pricing. Suppliers love an application like this because it allows them direct access to an audience with zero marketing, zero origination cost, driving their price down. And an automated application like this has very little cost to it. So the fees to the supplier who licensed this application, it helps bring the cost down. And then again, market alerts and market capability, market order capability. So looking at all of this, I joke, I say, you know, you get all the savings without the calories or the headaches. It is effortless, truly effortless. You set up an account and you have complete control and transparency on what's going on and where you can save money. It brings those savings to you. Completely transparent, the user can see exactly where they're gonna save money versus the utility, where they won't save money versus the utility and what their batting average is going to be for the term of their contract. And it is completely automated. So you don't have to remember when my contract's coming up. Nobody cares about energy. They just care about the bill. Nobody wants to remember this stuff. So as I mentioned at the beginning, I'm not here to pitch you on community energy. I'm here to pitch you on what I consider a next-gen community energy, what I would call a pilot program. This is a little distorted on my screen from what's there, but you'll get the gist. You know, a powered-by Kilowatt AI proposition. What's different about this? Obviously, the technology ensures customers that they cannot harm themselves and lock into an offer that will cost them money. It's an opt-in offering. I have a, I guess you can say, a difference of opinion with community energy as it's been endorsed here in Rhode Island. I don't like the opt-out. I don't like that you have to force somebody in and have them get out of the program. It's very captive. I think the technology speaks for itself, stands on its own beat with the value proposition. So it would be an opt-in offering, choice, not a mandate. The trade-off, as opposed to going, using the state statute to mandate that residents and businesses are automatically enrolled, is that the town would endorse this, the town would vet it, proof it, and then give the virtual okay to taxpayers to let them know that this thing's been vetted. Because the number one hurdle that somebody like I have in this marketplace with something like this is a lot of people look at AI, they get a little spooked. People naturally thinks things like this could be a scam. So vetting it is very important and letting the taxpayer know that it's been vetted. And then from a transparency perspective, it's cloud-based, it's designed for mobile use, your phone, and everybody has custom savings. So if I'm a household, I'm gonna have a price and savings that's particular to my usage profile. If I use air source heat pumps in the winter and I use more energy in the winter, it'll calculate my savings differently than somebody who doesn't and uses a lot of AC in the summer. Timing is everything with the markets. It's time of purchase and time of use, how you use that energy makes all the difference in realizing savings. These are little details that get glossed over in the community energy program and what the state does and what the utility does or doesn't tell you. So each taxpayer would have complete transparency, automated savings, automated reports on the performance of their contract and at any time, they can elect to not participate. So that's the proposition. That's what I've been building for the last three years. Continue to build this out. I think it's a fantastic application, starting to be used now. You know, some of the businesses like Hasbro are starting to use it, Ocean State Job Lot and some of their stores, South County Health, you know, the medical building, for instance, right here on Post Road, that purchases energy through Kilowatt. And a number of residential users also have benefited from it by signing up, taking advantage of those market lows. We've had two of them in the past year. April was a market low and we are coming out of a market low right now, which was one of the reasons I wanted to get this on the agenda sooner than later. So with that having been said, thank you for listening to me. I know this is not a sexy topic, but it is important for people, particularly businesses and people that are struggling to pay their energy bills. The utility is not interested in lowering their prices. They'll shift them to the commercial rate payers, but it's up to you. It's up to the buyer to take care of that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, very informative. I'll open up to the council a little bit, Mr. Councilor Niemeyer?
Well, thank you for coming today and thank you for giving this presentation. You mentioned one of the transparency items that's available through your program is savings analyses for the consumers. If we were to endorse, if we were to endorse Kilowatt, would we get as a town, a community savings analysis as well? This sort of aggregates that data so that we have a sense of how well that endorsement played out?
Yeah, we could aggregate all the participants. So absolutely.
Now, how do you see the role of the town specifically? Are we doing any facilitation or is this just as simple as including our endorsement on your advertisement?
I think it could be a number of things. I mean, it's really driven by the town council to the degree that you guys are interested and are comfortable. Obviously, complete operational responsibility is the responsibility of Kilowatt. From a promotional perspective, obviously, I would never say no to the town promoting the program. I think there's a great help to towns to either A, vet and/or B, promote and share the knowledge and awareness. Everybody's busy. You know, it's very difficult for somebody like me to market effectively to the 22,000, 23,000 residents that you guys have, right? So if there is a way, whether it's newsletters or any other opportunity to publish that the town has such a program, I would certainly welcome that. I don't think it would be costly to do that. In the digital age, a lot of that stuff is web-oriented. If there were certain costs, obviously, we would discuss the roles of each party in doing that. But the number one hurdle, and I can't stress this enough, and this is why you see the opt-out in the legislation. People don't trust marketed programs, they just don't trust them. I mean, I've gone to businesses and presented this, showing them 25, 30% savings on their supply. I mean, gross savings, really obvious stuff, and they think there's a catch. So the importance of vetting the application, and I would welcome it being vetted, tweaked. We developed this application. I don't sub this out, I have full-time development to build this app. So if there are tweaks that need to be made in the presentation, I'm all for it. So that's the number one to answer the question is the vetting and then to the promotion and the knowledge, the awareness.
Okay. My last question, do you have any current municipal partners that we could turn to to discuss how they're going through this?
We are doing a test with the city of Cranston. It is not for the residents, however, it's simply for their municipal accounts as a test. They've been in that test now since July, I believe, June, actually, they started. And it's living up to expectation. I'd be happy to share with you folks the results of that to show you. It basically give you the savings analysis. It'll show you exactly, it'll, it'll show you exactly when they locked in. It'll show you it triggered right at the market low in April. It'll show you the savings performance that was predicted, the savings that's actually materialized. So that's the closest we have to a municipal partner. Otherwise, it's residents, it's small businesses, mid-sized businesses. And I'm looking for a pilot, which is what brings me to Wesley.
Gotcha. Do you, have you given this, sorry, one more question?
Yeah.
Have you given this presentation to any other municipalities other than, you know, obviously Cranston? You must have given it at some point. Has this been done between Cranston and us and any other municipalities?
Charlestown, my hometown, I did that last year to make them aware. It wasn't really under the auspice of setting up a program with them yet. It was more of an awareness campaign. It's a small town, I just wanted residents to know that this was out there. And if they needed a solution to lower their energy price, this was really a no-brainer. So I presented it to the town council just as more of an informative. This would be my first time presenting this to a municipality with the request or the proposal to actually make a pilot program. My intention is to bring this to all of the municipalities in Rhode Island and then we'll be moving out of the state of Rhode Island. You know, I'm from Rhode Island, I love Rhode Island. I know Rhode Island exceptionally well as far as the energy markets here and the utility. So it was logical to build a product, pilot the product and then bring it to full commercialization here. And then we'll be going into probably Massachusetts, Connecticut next.
Well, thanks for thinking of us first and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Councilor Healy?
Thank you very much. Is this your son?
That is my son, Rocco, yes.
Thank you for bringing him. What your dad's doing is awesome, following his footsteps. Quick questions. You said you own the program and everything to do with it. It's not, you don't have any third parties. With the AI information, would that only be stored for you? Or where would, or where would all of the information being collected go?
That would go to the third party that we use. We, I don't own the service, that's hosted by a third party, as is typical. So we have all of the encryption protection of that there. If you needed a If you needed a statement. Or the details on that, is that the question more of the security associated with the information?
A bit, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to provide you with that if that's, if that's really a concern.
Usually, sometimes in, in a contract like this, a data place will give up a date. You know, we'll, we won't release your information for five years, but at five years, you got to call us and let us know you don't want that. Is that kind of what we could expect or you don't?
If you want, I mean, we could apply whatever mechanisms you want. Right now, the data that's on the server, the database, there is no wiping clean. We maintain all of that data. The more data we collect, the better the model gets and the logic.
Okay. You talked about marketing. If the town wasn't going to say, do, you know, bullet in or anything like that? If we just say we didn't do any of it, how would you reach our neighbors?
Be difficult, I mean, you have the classic marketing channels, you could do direct mailing. You could do social media.
I ask because it's been brought to us about changing our door to door sales policy. So if that were to change, that might affect you. And I, I guess I just want to put that on the floor, that, that is something that has been discussed reworking. And then, so you're testing in Cranston. Do you, did you say when you think to go live full or is it?
No, this is in production now, you could go to kilowatt.com and you could sign up and use it. So it's already open, there would be some customization, for instance. If the town were interested in doing a pilot, we would come up with a. A special, probably through a QR code, special URL. So residents that are coming in, we know they're coming in through the town program. Number one, we could account for them and track the information that. Mr. New Meyer had asked about, you know, doing the reports. Preferably, I would not want to be doing door to door sales. You know, it's kind of, it defeats the purpose of trying to leverage the town's. Position to scale it within the town, right? We, our interest would be getting it in front of as many taxpayers as quickly as possible.
And is that what you mean by it's being vetted? Would it be? When it says the town endorsed it and is vetted for, is that, are you saying that we're going to build to that? Or we are already endorsing you and it's already been vetted?
I think it's already built to spec, but I would present it in more detail, whether it's through a follow up meeting. Or with Mr. Lacy. Or even offline, separate of the town council meeting, maybe an executive committee. To, to learn the details, to see how this actually works, how it functions. The mechanisms and the logic that we have in place for consumer protection. The mechanisms and the logic we have in place to exploit the market. One of the unique, unique features of this application. Is it's always hunting for savings. It's not the typical, you're going to lock into a price for twelve months. Today, the best deal may be one month, two months from now, the best deal may be four months and it just keeps changing. So there's a little bit of a, a difference from a behavioral perspective. People are not used to seeing their price move.
Right.
But that's how you get savings. So because savings drives the application, not the perception of price stability or theoretical savings.
My biggest concern is we're going to, in, in my opinion, we're going to see a lot of spikes versus dips. Coming up. So I'm, I'm concerned that. And I'm not comparing you to the other community because I, I fully realize those are very different programs. But we were presented where we were able to lock in, yes, but. The amount that we were able to be locked into in August was. Was a good, I, I'm not going to lie, it was, it was a good rate. Now, here we are, months later, who knows? I'm glad that it's an opt in, don't get me wrong, everybody up here. Not everybody, a lot of people up here really want that. But that does come with its own challenges of how we get people to know about it. How? Are we actually providing the savings to people? It's hard to, hard to, for me to see. But I also realize that you're in the beginning stages, so I respect it. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Next, Council.
All right, just, just, I'll get to the question. The last people that came to us automatically wanted to opt in the whole town. By many of them, or at least some of them against their will, and that's why that died. But I understand why they came to the town, they needed us to sign everybody up. I, I'm, I'm a little confused, what you, what is your ask of us? What are you, what are you coming to the town for? Are we just a marketing tool for you or what do you need us to do actually to help? Get this, I'm, I'm just wondering what your ask is, I guess.
No, fair question, it's, it's a combination. It's to put a stamp of approval on it. To break that barrier of trust. And then two, to help promote it.
Well, how will we do that, like an ad in a paper, like what exactly do you see us doing?
From a marketing perspective?
Well, I'm just wondering, why are you here, what do you want from us? What do you think?
Well, today, tonight is because I have such a short period of time out of respect for your time as well, is just to introduce you to this technology. It's out there, it's live. I mean, you all could sign up to test it and use it if you wanted to. The next step would be to get into more details of bringing this to the taxpayers. I think this is a huge value to every energy consumer, whether you're, you're a household or you're a business. Everybody can value from it. And yes, so the town can provide a sense of trust. It just can. It will take years for this brand to build up a level of trust from people using it piece by piece by piece, right? I'm trying to expedite that a little bit. If a town could get involved, that this, say this thing works. You can trust it. That's a hurdle that now the consumer, your taxpayer can clear.
So you think this town council's endorsement provides a level of trust to our community?
Sure, I would hope so.
So. All right, so I, I, I mean, I, there's nothing wrong with it, I, obviously, the opt in as opposed to the opt out is great. I, I mean, I don't know what we could do, maybe run something in the paper or whatnot, I mean, I, I hope it takes off, but. You know, I guess we can talk about it further down the road or something.
Yeah, and I think I mentioned to Mr. Lacy, you know, in Charleston where I live, they had, you know, all the solar. Products that they put out there, the solar companies, they had endorsed. And part of that endorsement was helping promote it, they allowed this organization to promote their product. So.
Any other questions? Yes, Council Manover.
Hi, thanks for coming out. Okay, so. When you say the town vetting, do you mean? This, this building with all its employees or just this building?
Town vetting it?
Yeah, I mean, how are you gonna, how are we going to use it in order to vet it?
I would imagine that there would be some sort of small committee setup. To handle this and that committee would work with me, for instance, to walk through, to get an understanding of how the application functions. And that would be the sleeve through which the town would endorse it or support it. It wouldn't be having everybody in the building use it, it wouldn't even necessarily be the entire town council unless the town council wanted to be involved in that. That's what I would be envisioning.
Okay. The rate, you said it'll spike every day or throughout, does, does the rate change as it? Like moment by moment or how does that work? Like, does it lock in? Because you said to lock in, but for how long is it? Is it a month? Because most companies want you to lock in for six months, whatever. So with that rate change. If it drops down tomorrow, does, do you get that rate? Do you, how do you not lock in? Is, you understand what I'm saying, like, how's that work?
So without getting into the gory details about how energy futures trade, every day prices change.
Right.
This app usually is updated every day by the different suppliers that putting prices out there. Markets go up, they go down. The market condition that we've been in for the past twelve month has favored substantially buying short, buying one month, two months, one month, two months. Just riding that market down, locking in. Five months ago, six months ago would not have benefited you versus going short. However, when markets start going up. You benefit by locking in further to avoid the further increase. And therein lies the art of buying energy futures. So the application shops indiscriminative term. It's savings oriented. If your alternative rate with Rhode Island Energy is fourteen cents for the winter. And you could lock in at thirteen, it's going to lock in at thirteen and give you that savings. If Rhode Island Energy's rate in the summer goes down to ten and it can't find you savings, it's going to put you back with Rhode Island Energy. But I don't have an interest in locking in people at a rate, I have an interest in delivering them savings. So that's why at the opening, on the opening slide, if you saw, it said savings is your only choice. It's all about, I'm effectively pushing savings to a consumer, that's my service and I'm using energy to do that. But yes, it will change. I can't tell you because the algorithms will change with the market, but you will always save. The difference that you guys are used to seeing or the marketplace for the most part is used to seeing is lock in for a year, lock in for six months. You lock in, that market's moving then after that. And if that market's going down, you're losing money. And that's where people are getting kind of crushed right now with the community energy. They don't even, it's not a market based rate, it's based on the utilities rate with a little discount. Meanwhile, the market's giving huge amounts of savings throughout the year and nobody's getting a piece of that, the marketer's getting a piece of that. So.
So how do you make your money if we're getting below market rate with?
Yeah. So it's a software services agreement, participating suppliers pay a license fee to use Kilowatt. So there's no direct fee to the consumer. So, and, and the prices that are in the application are all inclusive of whatever the supplier is putting in there to recover their subscription cost to the software. So.
So if I want to take my phone right now and. Upload your app. And put it in there and try start using it tomorrow, is that, is that available? Is it, can I just use it as a sole?
Yeah.
Person?
Yep, it's live.
And we don't, and in the end, we're not telling the townspeople they have to do this, right? It's not a community thing at all. Because that's, that's a concern for me, I don't, I don't, not pushing any of what I want on, on what people in the town want.
Correct, it's not, it's not a mobile app. Mobile apps you have to download to your device, this is a cloud based app, it's a dot com. So you simply go to the URL, kilowatt.com. And it's right there on your phone, you sign up and it walks you through the process. Take a picture of your utility bill, upload a PDF of your utility bill, it takes that information off of it. Create your utility account and then it starts shopping for you. And it gives you, it, it streams to you the lowest trending offers that are available. And if there are no offers that will save you money, there will be no offer available to you. That's how you protect the marketplace, you don't even give them the choice to lock into a price in the hope it's going to save them money.
And I can opt out of it. I opt in tomorrow, I can opt out the next day.
The service is free, there's no cost to subscribe or use the application. Once you accept an offer, that transaction is a three step transaction acceptance and you're accepting a contract. So if you took an offer for three months. You are expected to honor that three month term. Rhode Island does not have. A, a, a law or any mechanism that requires energy marketers to allow consumers to get into a price and leave it the next month. Connecticut has that, Massachusetts has that for the residential, not in Rhode Island. So the expectation is once that offer selected, accepted, you will honor it for the term.
Got it, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Shaba.
Thank you for coming. Can, can you share your energy suppliers with us?
Currently in Rhode Island, I, I have First Point Power and I have Hampshire Power, which does businesses grid wealth. And currently in discussions with a much larger third and international based player to become the third player. But that's not finalized yet.
And how many times can somebody opt in and opt out, say in a year's time? Let's just say.
When you say opt in, opt out, so accept offers?
Yeah, because they're nervous, whatever.
The application has offers that range from one month to thirty six to forty months in every term in between.
Okay.
So if you took one month, for instance, the application right now, as I previously mentioned, is rewarding short term purchases. You could go one month to one month to one month, you could opt out at the end of any of those one months. If the application cannot find savings for you. It'll automatically put you back to the utility's last resort service from which you came. So it doesn't force you off the utility and then charge you market based rates. One of the requirements, and this is one of the reasons I have license agreements with suppliers, is one of the requirements for every participating supplier. At the end of the term. If they did not, if the consumer did not select a replacement offer. They have to return them to the utility, that is not the practice right now in the marketplace. The marketplace is, if you went and purchased an agreement or an offer directly. The fine print will say that at the end of your term, if you do not notify them of termination. It will roll over to a market based rate. And that's where consumers get crushed, they forget about the expiration and they go on a market based rate, which is invariably. Five hundred percent above market and people get fleeced, I mean, you've probably heard those stories. The app will not allow that.
And are there any fees for people if they kind of do that, opt in, opt out?
So it's at the discretion of the supplier to assess an early termination fee. If you. Sign up for a four month deal, two months into, you say I want out. Technically, you will get out. Will they assess you in what we call an ETF, an early termination fee? Residential, you never see them because it's just small, it's too small. Even small businesses, you don't typically see ETFs. When you get to a larger business, it could be a material loss for the supplier. And then you may be subject to an ETF, but that is all disclosed in the terms and conditions. In the app, when they go to accept an offer.
And are your suppliers giving you future rates that that's what you're using to do your rates for the consumer?
Suppliers plug in to our database at their discretion, daily, intra daily, weekly. A series of rates and these rates are by rate class. They have a set start period in multiple terms. So if you could imagine today, we would have starts for now December, you're always starting the month ahead. We have a December start, anywhere from one month to say thirty six months. We have January stocks, one to thirty six, February stocks, one to thirty six. There's literally thousands and thousands of prices streaming into the application database. And this is where the. Analysis, the AI logic kicks in, it can crunch these numbers immediately as opposed to you trying to figure it out to find where that optimal term is of savings.
And then they'll tell you which, and which energy supplier we should get the energy from at that point.
Yep, step three, the final step, it discloses who the supplier is.
Should we pick the energy supplier or do you tell us through the AI which energy supplier that you have?
The AI runs on numbers. So if I have three energy suppliers putting in numbers with a December start for three months. The app is only going to show one of those offers to the consumer. It's only going to consider the lowest offer out of those three for the logic. It, it doesn't care who the brand is, it cares about the number because all the other terms and conditions are the same. It's a commodity, so I'm commoditizing a commoditized product.
Right, the consumer doesn't pick, AI picks it for them and.
It's like a blind taste test, the AI doesn't know who the provider is, it just knows numbers. And then it brings up the, the low number for that term. And then it will disclose upon acceptance, you know, this is grid wealth or this is First Point Power. Once you accept, there's no transactions on this application, there's no credit card information, there's no money being exchanged, it's a switching app. The utility bills for the supply, you still receive your utility bill like you do now, it'll just have the supplier on there. The supplier by law will send a notification that you are switching to them. And if you wanted to opt out, you could opt out at that point. And in the state of Rhode Island, there's a seventy two hour, three day rescission law. Once you accept an offer through the application, within three days, you can go in and click cancel and wipe out the transaction as well. There's a lot of mechanisms.
And say you opt in for three months and because of future pricing, will you get three months worth of pricing out from your suppliers? And AI give you an actual average for the three months of what they think your saving is or is it only going to just kind of be at that point?
No, so if we're looking at a December start and you're looking at a three month price, the app knows what the utility rate is. It knows what the offer rate is, it knows what your usage is, if you plug the usage in and it will do the math and tell you. Mishalaba, you will save, you know, fifty eight dollars over the next three months for your residential account. If you accept a twenty four month offer, which is beyond the term of the utilities filing, we have predictive analytics.
Sure.
And we predict what the utility rate will be in future summers and winters because the application, the logic knows exactly how Rhode Island Energy buys their energy. The timing and we reproduce it and we're in very close proximity, three, four percent. Over the past three years, very tight tolerance. And so we could predict what the savings is going to be in the future if you go out that far. And then if you took that three month offer today. It runs through March, the app immediately starts shopping for March forward. It's always shopping into the future to try to find you savings.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Council Yello.
Thank you. Sounds very promising, I, I do like the opt in option a lot better.
Yep.
And I prefer a vetting process rather than endorsing a, a company. My beliefs as, as the government. And then. I mean, I, I'd like to see the town manager set up a little internal. Committee and, and vet this and then. Bring it back and. Go from there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I'm, I'm impressed as well with the services that you've defined. I can see, you know, some great savings possibly. I can see, you know, some great savings possibly. And I think the manager, if we rely on the manager and a committee under the manager to evaluate, so-called vet this process out, I would, I would look for details, the terms and conditions. I mean, you provided a ton of information tonight, but it's, I'm sure there's hours that we can get, get more involved. So details on the terms, the conditions, examples of savings that were achieved, track record that you provided an alternative to was really impressive. So I would, I would hope the council supports having the manager work on this and, and get, get more comfortable with it so that we can recommend to the town. But right now, it seems like a, you know, a great opportunity. So killawatt.com is, is what a taxpayer could look at without our approval.
It's open to the public now.
And, and then they, they could evaluate it themselves, but I think it's worth for the town to look at this.
Thank you.
So thank you. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Raso. Next, we have citizens' comments or items that are on the agenda. Five minutes is allotted. We have a signup sheet. First is, the only one on the signup sheet is Anthony Palazzolo. You start anytime, Mr. Palazzolo.
Good evening. Anthony Palazzolo, North Stonington, Connecticut. Although I do own property in Westerly. I am licensed to practice law in California and in Connecticut, but I'm not licensed to practice law in Rhode Island. Nothing I say tonight should be construed otherwise or to be construed as an opinion of law. I'm incapable of rendering an opinion of law, no matter what I say. It's, that's not what's happening. I do do a fair amount of shoreline access advocacy. Never charged a penny for any of that. I couldn't because I'm not licensed to practice law. I'm merely just a would-be user of rights of ways. The fabulous beaches that you all have in Westerly. I'm speaking to the minutes, approval of the minutes of October 20th. Those minutes have a section.
I'm sorry, which date?
October 20th. So that's 9G. The minutes say that at the request of Councilor Healy, Town Manager Lacy explained the use of the official town seal, which is for the official town documents, and the unofficial seal that can be used by the public. That contains material omissions and material representations. Certainly, Councilor Healy did ask about the use of the town seal on the Niantic Avenue rights-of-way signs. But in what has to be a Guinness World Record for Linguistic Efficiency, Sean Lacy told us all four times in four seconds that he didn't have the foggiest notion of what was going on there. If you look at the October 20th video, three hours, six minutes, and 40 seconds, you will hear Sean Lacy's answer to Councilor Healy's question. It starts out as follows, and I quote, "I assume that the town, the town, I don't know. I'm just guessing. This probably happened when we were all kids." Now, none of that is reflected in the minutes here. That guy didn't have the foggiest notion of what went on. But then he proceeded to answer Alex Healy's question anyway incorrectly, leaving her and all the rest of us with the impression that the signs we were talking about there were not town signs. I sent you correspondence with attachments. Three times the harbor management plan indicated that those were, quote, "town signs." Right away, it was posted for the town sign. But in, in every one of those three times, the Harbor Management Commission vetted the harbor management plan. It went through the planning board, came to the town council, presumably reviewed by the town manager and solicitor, and then unanimously, the council voted that that was accurate. Those were town signs. Nonetheless, four times in four seconds, Sean Lacy said he had no idea what's going on, and your minutes here indicate that he knew what was going on, and then he explained it. Now, this is not just some pedantic exercise. Sean Lacy does this all the time, and he works Bill Conley to do it, too. The reason why this is particularly relevant is because Bill Conley's opinion was trying to establish that there's no official action whatsoever that might be considered acceptance of the Niantic Avenue right-of-way. And Sean's Lacy's denial that that sign is, is real and official action is part of that. And it's a part of a pattern of behavior between Sean Lacy and Bill Conley. With respect to Fort Road, Sean Lacy on August 31st, 2022, said, "The town is not taking the position that Fort Road is a public right-of-way. There's a 17-page consent agreement from the Watch Hill Fire District who claims that they own the road, giving everyone a right of access at any time in perpetuity." Sean, the town has never taken the position that Fort Road is not a public right-of-way. And as we've seen, it's not true that the conservation easement provides access. They did the same thing with interrogatories in the Fort Road case. The maps you have, they answered the question. They have another 30 seconds?
I, I disagree. This isn't even on our agenda. I've let this go for your five minutes, but it's not even on our agenda. This sign.
Want to make a motion that I have 30 seconds?
No, I'm not going to entertain a motion.
I'm asking you, anybody else?
I'll make a motion. You can have 30 seconds.
Then a full vote. Anyone?
You got a second.
Councilor V. Dover?
I seconded it. Yeah. Yes. Give him another 30 seconds.
Yes.
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 I would, I would have voted no, as you could tell. You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. After the Watch Hill Fire District on Fort Road, a lawsuit on Fort Road was filed. The fire district quite reasonably sent out interrogatories asking if the town had any map showing where the so-called Fort Road right-of-way is. Sean Lacy prepared the answers. And in his deposition, he said Bill Conley helped him write them. "I passed out a map to you." That's his answer for where Fort Road is. It didn't include any, any, any of the tax maps that are incorporated by reference in the 2008 resolution. What it does include is the map you have right there, the Larkin House. That's the Watch, that's the Watch Hill Lighthouse Road. Do any of you think that the Watch Hill Lice House is on Napertory Point? You see, what they're doing here is distracting, giving you an incorrect answer, so nobody knows what's going on. And I tell you here, because I've read the briefing, that judge in the Fort Road case who's going to decide summary judgment in just a few days, didn't ever get a copy of those goddamn tax maps, the only ones that are relevant. He's sitting there with the Watch Hill Lighthouse map. Sean Lacy doesn't have any credibility, and people need to know it, even the minutes.
We're into a minute now. Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? That concludes the signup sheet. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time, please come forward. You guys wanted to hear it, so. I see none. Council's response. Town manager, you want to respond?
I am highly offended that the council gave him additional 30 seconds. He's up here bashing myself and the solicitor with false information, sensationalized information. I'm highly offended by that. The comments that I made to the council, the comments that I made to the council over the time. So I stand behind the comments I made. I'm, I'm not sure what he's referring to, or what it was my lack of. I mean, I have, I've been working with the town close to 40 years. I'm very familiar with these locations. I don't claim I know everything about them. I can tell you how my history and my work product has been, that I've been involved in different things in these, these areas, on whether it be Fort Road or Lighthouse Road. I'm very familiar what Lighthouse Road is as opposed to Fort Road. So, and I stand behind, the signs that they're referring to on Ennec Avenue were not put up by the Town of Wesley. They were put up by the East Beach Association, which is similar to the other two right-of-ways. We have never put a right-of-way sign as we have with granite markers and the blue signs on the Niantic Avenue right-of-way. And I still stand behind that.
Thank you. Any comments? Councilor LaPietra?
First, I'd like to say to Sean, it's no, no reflection on you that we gave Mr. Palazzolo enough to 30 seconds. I apologize. And, you know, I think you're a great town manager. So to respond to Mr. Palazzolo, I'm going to say one, one correct and one incorrect. And the correct thing is, yeah, I think we should be talking a lot more about those tax maps as it pertains to Fort Road. I mean, that's, we, Mr. Duhem was counsel, talked about Fort Road for an entire year. And while they talked about that for the entire year, along with the Watch Hill Fire District in 2008, everybody seemed to know what Fort Road was there. And I think it's exactly where the tax maps are, and I think that's what we should be presenting. As far as the Niantic sign goes, I got to ask you one question. Who do you think these signs are for? Anyway, I mean, I, you know where Niantic Ave is. I know where it is. Everybody's grown up here knows where it is. I'm not really sure that that's a hill we need to die on. What I will say, and I think we should put this on the agenda pretty soon, is why this language is, languishes in CRMCs, whatever they do over there. And I'm not really excited about CRMC. I know Victoria Goos is supposed to clean them up, make them more efficient. That's been a failure. Why it's there for the next five to 10 years, the issue I see is this right-of-way growing over. Every year I go back there, and every year it's creeped in, and it's skinnier and skinnier, and nobody seems to be taking care of it. So I would say, forget the sign, because people here know where it is. But if we let it play all the way out in CRMC, there won't be a right-of-way left to walk down. So I would like to see the town start, go back to maintaining it at the very least. So we can maintain it, and then if East Beach wants to get involved in that again, fine. If East Beach wants to put up one of their signs again, fine. But I'm not, probably at this point, I'm probably going to leave the town sign and the stone marker out of this. But I will be pushing that we start to maintain this right-of-way again, because we know it's going to be sitting with CRMC for a long time.
Any other councillors wish to speak? Councilor Yello?
No, I too want to apologize to you, Sean. You, you do a great job. And it was no, my opinion, it was no reflection on that. Just trying to let the constituents have their say. I agree with Dylan. I think that we should start maintaining our own. That way, we know what's going on with them. And we're not necessarily putting it on East Beach to take care of business alone. If they want to get involved in it and help out, great. But I think we should have some town representation there, maintaining and watching. I was just down there today. I was just down in Napertory Point, walking around with my sister. I took her down to Everett, Everett Road and the Bluff, and, you know, walking around there and pointing things out to her. And they, they all are kind of overgrown, I have to say. If you didn't know they, some of them were there, you wouldn't know they were there. So, and I don't know if that's just because summer's over, they're just letting them go. But I, I do agree with Councilor LaPietra on that. Thank you.
Other councillors? Councilor Yello?
Thank you. Yes, I agree that the town should be, I believe it's in the comp plan too, should be maintaining all rights-of-way. And then if there's beach associations, other groups, whether it be Miss Quamico or the groups in East Beach, Watch Hill, wherever, they do a great job of cleaning up the beach, from my understanding. Going through the sand area and picking up things that people maybe leave behind. But I fully support the town clearing, maintaining, and marking all rights-of-way. And I was the one who made the motion to put it in a comp plan to mark all sides of the rights-of-way. So I'm going to continue supporting that. And the timing of it, do we need to sign up there today? I don't think we need to go out there tomorrow and put it up. But I think I can see a sign coming eventually. We're approaching winter. Most people that are going to go down there now know where it's at. And, but, you know, those welcome signs and, and some basic common courtesy rules of protecting all of our beaches. Clean up after ourselves. Don't trash the place. Be responsible. You know, things like that. I don't see anything at all wrong with that. But I do fully support and having the town clear, maintain, and mark all rights-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. And other comments? Councilor Shaba?
Sean, just like the others had said, it was just to finish hearing out the constituent. Mr. Palazzolo, I appreciate everything that you always do, all the information you provide to us. However, I do not appreciate when you come here and attack our solicitor and our town manager or anybody on this council, because that's not professional. And if you want us to take you seriously, whether you have the facts or you don't have the facts or whatever we believe, I would just really appreciate if you can refrain from the personal attacks and just stick to the facts, please. But thank you for the work you do. I do appreciate the work, because there is a lot of work that has opened our eyes.
Anyone else like to speak? I'll, I'll just finish by thanking the town manager for the work that he does, and the town solicitor for the work that they do. They advise the council, and they advise the town on what is in the best interest. And I would second what Council Vice President Shaba has put forward. We want to have professional discussions, whether they're in agreement or disagreement, but they should be professionally delivered and, and not personal in nature. That's it for citizens' comments. Next, we have our consenting calendar. I'm going to go through both dates of the minutes individually. Item 5A, approval of minutes, regular, 10/6/25.
Second.
Motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Minutes approved. Approval of minutes, regular, 10/20/25.
I sent an email earlier today, so I motion to continue these to the next regular meeting. So can we, can we approve it? The way you sent the email, is that, will that be all right with you? I never heard back, so I'm just, I'm assuming that people may not have seen it. So I'd just like to give the clerk and time to review it and.
She sent us an email, I think.
I sent the amended minutes to every council member.
Your red line changes were in there. We do have an amended version. Yeah.
Sorry. I didn't know you sent it out. I guess I wasn't on that email. I didn't know it goes. I never got it.
We all received the red line minutes.
Motion to approve the 10/20 minutes as amended by Councilor Yello.
Second.
Motion amended, seconded, discussion. Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, I have some questions about the minutes that were amended. First off, you know, the minutes don't need to be this detailed because we have the taped recording of it. But some of the information on these minutes that have been put in, the, does not seem to actually jive with the actual executive session minutes procedure. Under historical past practice, it talks about draft minutes being provided to counselors in their packets a few days prior to meeting. That has nothing to do with executive session minutes. There is a thing under current process, there's a statement saying, "None of these methods seem fair or reasonable, or given proper notice to the public as to why." The public doesn't get executive session minutes. The public doesn't get executive session minutes. I think the fact that it's already there, written by the town clerk, when basically it says Counselor Yello read aloud for the record his document titled Process for Review and Approval of Executive Session Minutes Historical Past Practice and Current Process and Proposal is enough for the minutes to move forward as written. Because I mean, if you really want to write out every single thing that was said on the tape, you're missing crucial information, including the fact that Mary did state a process for us on how to do minutes, which was, we can read them prior to the council meeting or prior to executive session meeting. She did tell us why she was changing the, her process. It's her process. And it also should state then in these changes that Counselor Yello stated that going forward, he is going to abstain from every single executive session minute meeting approval based on what has happened. And he's not the only one that said that. Counselor LaPietra said that as well. So if we're going to amend minutes that we don't need to amend, in my opinion, then we need to amend them with all the details and not leave certain things out.
Any other comments? I, I took the, the red, red comments as something that Counselor Yello alone stated, so we're not going to re-debate that, that process. So I'm, I'm willing to leave, leave the red lines as is or.
I'm, I'm, I think I'm inclined to the same notion to leave the red lines as is. If a counselor wants to have their words clarified in the way that they want, and it is clear that it is their words and not the discussion that we had, therefore, some of the concerns you have about some information being missing would be explained by it being the counselor's own words as part of that greater discussion. I think the counselor should have the right to do that. We all want to be quoted accurately in, in the minutes for ourselves, and if Counselor Yello felt that these additions made the points that he made in the meeting more clear, I think it's reasonable to include them.
Any other comments?
Mary mentioned that the minutes were a little too detailed, Mary. I look at, watch that going forward, Mary LeBlanc and Don. Don't make them too detailed, please.
They are very detailed. Counselor Van Dover?
I, I agree with Counselor Niemeyer. I think, I don't think there's any harm in having these here. I think that it clarifies things. If it makes, if it makes it a little, little clearer for us or anyone else reading it, I, I don't see the harm. I, I would, I would leave the red, red changes in. Thank you.
Sure.
I just, I just want to ask, has anybody listened to the tape to go back? Because some of the, some of the way, the writing of these minutes sound more like an opinion and not what was actually stated on the tape. So I, I would be very wary of amending, of approving the minutes amended without actually everybody listening to the tape and noting that everything that is written in that amended statement is correct.
So let's, I'll make a motion to move these, the approval of these minutes to the next meeting.
Whoa, easy, easy there, Tex. Let's not get that far ahead.
What was your motion?
To, to move the approval of these minutes.
You listened to Mary. This is something that was sent in.
Don't tell me who I'm listening to, okay? It has nothing to do with Mary. If, if, if for one minute, any of us seemed to think that we didn't listen to the tape in order to verify all these. So, so that, that's my, was my understanding. So they're your attachment from, they're not, they're not what was said in the meeting.
Mr. President?
Can you clarify, please?
Let's have, let's have some more and more. Just the clerk, clerk wants to speak.
I went back to the audio and the corrected, the motion as it's corrected is what was stated, and Counselor Yello did read aloud the entire document. So it's in red.
So Counselor Yello read this, so that's reflected in the minutes?
Then I'll take back my motion.
Any other comments?
Just quickly, and I just want to throw it out that I think Dr. Kabonk does an absolutely wonderful job with the minutes. I just want to say that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Six to one. Chair votes yes. Fiscal manager, none. Resignations and appointments, a town council liaison appointment that's made by the council president, permanent housing committee. I'm going to appoint Counselor Alex Healy, former member of the housing committee and great knowledge in this, and hopefully to create a pathway for housing in Westerly. Thank you, Alex, for volunteering. Next, public hearings. This was advertised on 10-13, 10-20 and 10-27, 2025. Petition for zoning ordinance and map amendment. An ordinance and amendment of chapter 1439 of the general ordinances of the Town of Wesley entitled, Reenact and ReAdopt Chapter 1242, entitled, The Wesley Rhode Island Zoning Ordnances of 1998 as amended, and the Wesley zoning map. Petition of Cal and Cheryl Calder to rezone from MDR 30, medium residential 30, to RR 60, rural residential 60. Property located at 11 Quarry Road, Bradford, and belonging to Cal and Cheryl Calder. Discussion and possible action.
Motion up. Open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion to open the public hearing by Counselor Yello, seconded by Counselor Shalaba. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We are now in a public hearing. Mr. Schrenzio, would you like this?
Certainly.
Begin?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Sergio Schrenzio with Schrenzio and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. I'm here this evening with my associate, Teresa Mulford, and the property owner, Cal Calder. The property that we are speaking of this evening is located, excuse me, a minute. It's located at 11 Quarry Road, Taxation Standards Map 45, Lot 7. I will bring up for you quickly here, just a radius map to, just orient you the location. The site is located once again at 11 Quarry Road. It's shown up on this, this site map here. This is a half mile radius. It's, it's situated in mostly residentially, residential neighborhood. Some, the property to the south, I believe is the solar facility or an approved solar facility with the remaining properties either being vacant or that they residential. Zooming in closer to the property, right off Quarry Road, you can see that situated, there's a, a wetland complex in the northeast portion of it. That was a challenge in order to get access to the site, but we worked through getting access with some neighbors and there's, there's appropriate access to get in and out. My client is using that property currently. Cal runs a beekeeping service. It takes him all around the country and he, the purpose of our application this evening is to rezone the property into an RR 60, which will allow for general agriculture to be allowed to use on the, on the property. The property historically had been used for farming use and there was a commercial poultry farming and a chicken coop that was situated on a remnants of a concrete slab, which Cal uses for his bee, bee hives currently. The, the property is RR 60 on the east side and RR 60 portion of such to the, to the west side, and this will kind of bridge that gap between with MDR, as we said, we're, we're changing it from RR 6, excuse me, MDR 30 to RR 60, which those properties will remain to the north and the south. He intends to construct a single family residence on the property in addition to using it as for agricultural use, including his apiary business. So we had a, an endorsement from the planning board on the, the zone change and we will, we've also got a letter of endorsement from the Westerly Land Trust on the good work that Cal has done since he's moved to town. He still maintains his business in other parts of the country, but he's brought his skills to the Town of Westerly and it's been a tremendous benefit for the, the pollinators in the area and to get local honey. We know it's all, all very good business. Local pollinators in the area and the local business that he's bringing to the Town of Westerly. So with that, just keeping this brief, if there's any questions, Mr. Calder is here. It's a relatively straightforward application to, to rezone the property, maintain a residential use, but also open it up for agricultural use.
Thank you. Thank you for that summary. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this application? Yes, please come forward. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Tammy Anderson, and I'm on Eight Woody Hill Road, and I was just curious what was going on there and Eight Woody Hill Road. So the intent is, I get, I just found out, for a single residence and the beekeeping?
That was the testimony, yes.
And so later, after he's there, is it possible like a development or anything like that can go in? No?
If, if, he's going from a 30,000 square foot residential to 60,000, so it's becoming less dense.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none. Any counselors have any questions? Counselor Healy?
This single family home, is it going to be stayed in, within the family? Are you having, or is it, are we gonna be bringing new housing to people that don't live here or want to live there?
Just give me your name for the record.
Cal Calder, property owner in this action. No, actually, the wife and I just want to build a house for ourselves and our dog.
Perfect.
Basically, the, the whole reason I'm doing the rezoning thing is, is like I say, it is just the wife and I and the dog. And the way it's currently zoned, I can't build a larger, say shop, barn, whatever you want to call it, than what the house would be. And actually, with my number of hives and business around the country, I need to, I'm sorry. Where did you lose me?
Actually.
No, what I was saying was, I need a larger shop than house, square footage wise, and that's what's precipitated this whole rezoning.
Perfect. You don't need to, to convince me. I'm, I'm all in.
No.
I just wanted to know if it was going to stay, you know, within the family or what, what was going to happen, but the only thing, my only question is, can I have some honey? So truly like.
I'm sure we could work that out.
Yes, can I buy some honey? I live.
We, we can work that out.
I live in Bradford, so it would be nice to keep it that close. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Counselor Niemeyer?
Well, thank you for appearing before us today on this. Is, so if I understand correctly, the nature of the agricultural enterprise is not changing?
No. I mean, it's.
Can you?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not used. As far as the use of land goes, like Sergio had said, there used to be some fields and stuff there. I've been working with the Southern Conservation or Southern Rhode Island Conservation District, had them come in, mark out different diseased trees and that kind of stuff. This, this one. Like I said, I've been working with the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District, had them come in, mark out trees, invasive species, that type of thing to take care of. Some of the areas that used to be fields, I would like to clear some of the scrub brush out of and put in more pollinator friendly plants, basically put it back into, I don't want to say pasture, but you know, that type of thing.
Understood. So it will fundamentally remain an apicultural enterprise. It's not going to become like, you're not going to start farming cows on this property.
Well, no, no. I've got, I've got no interest in, I mean, I've already got plenty of livestock with the bees. I don't plan to go into cattle or hogs or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Even, not even chickens.
Good to know.
Any other counselors? Counselor Van Dover?
Counselor LaPietra and I were both at your hearing in front of the planning board, and I think it's a great idea and I'm definitely all for it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you for coming before us.
Thank you. Counselor LaPietra, were you at the planning board?
I was. I just want to say I love the, the local beekeeping aspect of this. Love it.
I'll jump in, Mr. President, and say that, that the beekeeping operation sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Well said. Yeah, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this farming aspect for, for this area especially, and beekeeping is a great, a great thing. I, I had a surveyor that worked with us. He brought in three samples of honey. So he was the most favorite employee in the company and the sweetest. Without any further comments, any, motion to.
Motion, motion to close the public hearing and approve the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Very good. Motion to approve the zone change and ordinance and to close the public hearing, seconded by Counselor Van Dover. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All, all in favor? Seven, zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on the agenda. Item H A, we are asked to suspend the town council rules of procedure, Rule 9D. Council operations to discuss and consider the following items, items 8A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just.
Counselor Healy?
Little, little modification to that is for discussion only, it's not to consider.
Yes, it's only discussion. Okay, so item 8A, fiscal year 2027, manager municipal capital budget. I've talked to the manager about this, this type of agenda item to get transparency to the budget process for the council. In many years that I've served on the council, the council gets involved after the finance board, after the manager's budget, the finance board, planning board review, finance board review, then it comes to the council, and that's when, you know, the council's wishes are first heard. I, the manager thought that this would be appropriate just to give him some, some idea what we're thinking. Mr. Manager, you want to?
Mr. President, I would suggest we have the solicitor chime in on, on what this can actually do tonight, because we can't give the manager any direction on this tonight. He can present his, his ideas, his, his thought process, but we can't give him any direction tonight whatsoever.
So, so Ms. Counselor Yello, we did ask the solicitor when you first raised this question, and there wasn't any gray area raised. So if there were, I would not have put it on the agenda, but this is a discussion of potential items to work with the manager on.
We really can't give the manager any direction, then.
That's what it is, a discussion.
It's a discussion, but so again, I mean, you just have to tread lightly.
Let's let, let's let the solicitor chime in.
Well, you were on the same email, so.
I agree.
If you want to hear it again. Mr. Connolly? Solicitor Connolly?
So the, the.
So the charter does establish the the actual budgeting process and establishes, you know, the procedure that the council should follow. So and it's time for discussion only, so the the council can't, another manager cannot outside of that budget process. That doesn't preclude the council from a discussion by way of example. You know, sort of what the items are that maybe the manager wants the council to think about or what the council wants to sort of think out loud about to get ahead of the process. But it's discussion only, that's why it's on the agenda of discussion only. And the council cannot take any action that would be inconsistent with the requirements of our charter.
Thank you. Yeah, in years past, these these requests would be offhanded without anyone else hearing of them, so. And that includes last year, so I, I think this is inappropriate for them. Mr. Manager, you want to?
Yeah, to start out, we just finished the, well, we're finishing from my end, the the capital requests of the budget, which are usually the big infrastructure projects that basically the direction of the town and projects moving forward that obviously come before all you during the budget process. But I think it's important, so this year as a result of a charter change, we're going to, the next week or so, I'll get together with the three members of the planning board. We'll go out to all the big projects, I'll kind of show them, educate them on the status and what the asks are and so forth. Because obviously, the first step is this goes before the planning board, and then we go before the planning board to make a presentation. So it's important to know last year's budget, it's not the current budget, that actually the year before, it would have been twenty five's budget. So we contracted with the company Studio, Studio J, J E A D, J A E D, to do an assessment of all town properties, everything, buildings, schools, every building, vacant property, recreation complexes, everything through the town to give us a general forecast of a ten year plan on what we should be doing for capital upkeep on our facilities. And again, I'm not knocking Westerly by any means, because we do put quite a bit of money into our facilities. But this is a general issue that they have nationwide, is is trying to maintain the infrastructures. So we did a ten year, a ten year plan, they assessed everything, and they came back. Keep in mind, example, the town hall, you know, there was a million and a half dollar heat and AC system that was just completed. There's a window project that are on nine hundred thousand that's just getting, you know, getting wrapped up, finishing up the stages of it now. So that's a lot of money to put into one building as far as capital requests go. So to give you a general idea, and we'll get in, everyone will get a copy of this during the the budget cycle. But so to give you a general idea, a ten year cycle, ten years just for town properties, hundred and twenty seven million dollars worth of worth of upkeep requests. We can't sustain a hundred and twenty seven million dollars. So it breaks it down just to immediate, immediate findings they found, seven point six million. Right? The high profile, one to three years, another forty nine million. Keep in mind, this has nothing to do with the upgrades of the sewer treatment plant. Medium, which is the next four to five years, twenty eight million dollars worth of upgrades. And and then the low side, the six to ten year margin, forty one million dollars for a total of a hundred and twenty seven million. So if you figure, if you're putting eight, ten million into capital projects a year, if you do over ten years, you're putting a hundred million dollars into capital. So we're we're not that far off really on what we do. This is a hundred and twenty seven million. Some of this is already done. Like the town hall, heat and upgrade, some of some of the stuff is already done. Some of the stuff within the sewer side of things on these findings are being taken care of with the sewer treatment plant, but not all. I mean, this is basically buildings, infrastructure upgrade. So this kind of gives you a breakdown of everything, so for the town over the next ten year period. So some of the things to give you an idea, so we, if I take the total capital request that I put together this year with all the departments, we're at ninety six million. Okay, a budget's only a hundred million. We can't do, but keep in mind, out of ninety six million, eighty five million of the sewer treatment plant. Right? So eighty five, six million is the road bond, you're at ninety one. Right? And then you take, there was another going into lead services, because we entered, we're going into that lead service contract. I'm another five or six million, so up to ninety seven. So really, the, if you take all that out, the ask isn't, in the in the way it's broken down in the chart. So if you, if you go town building, so the twenty seven ask would be seven hundred and fifty thousand. If you go into, and I apologize, some of the font's kind of small there, so the lighting's not. You don't have any of this. Because you're not supposed to have it, I'm only discussing it with you. I haven't even presented this, we haven't even finalized it yet. These are just town property. Yeah, it's just my, my town property, all the town properties, six million dollars is the ask. And and again, we have Similory Field, Gingerella Field, there's like hundred thousand on one, one hundred and sixty thousand on another. We've done a lot of upgrades of these fields, we did the parking lots, we did, you know, we're doing all kinds of infrastructure improvements. Bradford Preserve, the Recreation Complex, that's a million and seven, there's a first phase of that we're putting into. But I've allocated funding moving forward to keep the project moving forward. Rotary Park, three hundred and forty thousand in capital improvements. Tennis courts have to be redone, have to resurface, repainted, there's a life expectancy on these things. The lights in Rotary Park have to be done. Keep in mind, we share a lot of these facilities. When we put this money into capital requests like Similory Field or the Rotary Park, those are tennis courts that are used by the high school team. The baseball fields are used by the high school team. We put money into the fields at the school, you know, the the whether it be the football field, we did new lights there. It's all, it all benefits the school side too. So then you get down to, you know, technology improvements, three hundred and ten thousand dollars for technology improvements. That's townwide, meaning not school, this is just town I'm talking. The water department, the asks are about a hundred and fifty thousand. And then if I go down to the sewer department, the asks are about four hundred and nineteen thousand. And solid waste transfer station, the ask in the budget is eight oh five. Now, to give you an idea, just a transfer station alone, so we had an assessment done at the transfer building, which we're required to have by law. We have to contain the trash, million dollars just to fix the building. The roof is shot, we had a, there's a twenty year roof on the building that is now forty years old, or thirty eight years old, I think, there's holes in it. So the skin and, nothing wrong with the structure, but the skin on the roof and the skin on the outside of the building are million dollar upgrade to repair all that, right around that. We think it's it's out to bid now, it's gonna, and we also have the secondary building for recycling area. You have to keep your recycling enclosed, which we don't now. Recycling gets wet, it goes to the transfer station, we gotta, we get paid for what, we have to pay extra for wet recycling. We're in the process of doing the water main now, the water main going up to the transfer station for fire suppression. So those are some of the bigger projects that we're looking at, keeping in mind, we have the eighty film, eighty five million dollar sewer project that is going out the bid relatively next week or so, meaning for the subcontractors to do all the work. And then this road bond is in place, so that's broken down to six million a year over three years, which that funding is already in place, but is included in these charts for the total, the total funding. So that's kind of a general overview. I don't know if anybody, and again, I understand, Bill's concerned, this is strictly discussion. Is there any thing that any of the counselors, and granted, you're not directing me to certainly include things in capital requests, that that you may see some sort of shortfalls that we should be, I guess, paying attention to or to see if it's in fact on the list? You know, it's broken down into into buildings, recreation, infrastructure, and then all the different water sewer transfer, IT upgrades, the police side of things. And that's kind of where we're at. And I apologize, you don't have this, because it's not a final document yet. But I I certainly, I don't even, you know, by, when I share it with the planning board, which will probably be at the end of this week. I I mean, I guess, unless it's some violation of something, I could share it with the council, but I don't.
You know, I love my data.
Yeah, I mean, I I can. If, I usually don't, but I I certainly can, if it's not, there's no violation, I mean, I can.
So I, my, my idea was to have some topics that the manager would vet out or consider that the council has an interest in. So I'll open it up to any council that wants to start.
Very brief comment, thank you for the update. Could have been the town manager report, but next time. So I'm guessing if there's anything that you really haven't considered is really what you're looking for is if there's something they haven't considered. Because I, I just want to say this, and and I think there's, he does well in in several areas, but I think the town manager does exceptionally well with all of our infrastructure and public works operations and things going all around town. And and I just want to say thank you for that, and I think you got a good handle on all that, and I appreciate your work and Melissa's and everybody in town on on doing that. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Is this a time that we could ask the town manager to include something in in this capital overview?
I can go through my list, but yes, I would think it'd be a wish list. It's not something that's going to be funded.
All right, I would just pay that. The bare minimum cost it would take to get the marina to a point where it could be used in some capacity, if maybe I just dredge it and put on a dock in there or something. I'm not talking the the five million dollar ask with the elevators and the buildings and everything, but just the bare minimum cost it would take to get some fishermen back out there.
And I'll just say, so I did include in this capital request some funding for the marina, because I said we have to start something, building some account to in fact do it. There's no. But again, I don't, you know, it's going to take a little more than than what I'm allocating. If we're looking to get some sort of docking infrastructure in there. And again, does the council want to bite the bullet and just get it going and up and running? You don't have to do all the, you know, there was a proposed building, but the site has to be remediated, it has to be capped. And then there's some dredging involved for the docking.
But you're gonna.
I I had said the same thing at the agenda meeting, and the dredging seems to be the most critical. It takes.
Well, I think it's the first.
Years to get that approved.
No, they did, they said it wouldn't. They they they, they said it wouldn't. You know better, you're in the business, but they said originally, now, this is a year ago, probably six months to get the dredging approved, if we had plans in place for the docking infrastructure.
I I think you would get it in two February, so that's that's how, how far in advance. I'm sorry.
Well, where was I? So you did say that you're looking at some seed money for that project or some?
Seed money I put in here, but again, you, when it gets to the council's hands, it can certainly increase if if you need it to be.
Thanks, Sean.
Counsel Healy?
We had talked about the water towers, and we passed, is that included in what we're looking at or we will be looking at?
Yeah, so we signed a ten million dollar contract with the, so there's allocated funding each year on the water side for that total maintenance program on the tanks that is included.
And then I'm gonna say the three dreaded words, Potter Hill Dam.
Potter Hill Dam is on here with the funding that's allocated, it's no, now that's a non-town match.
Okay.
You know, that's all federal money.
That's, that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Any others? Counsel Shalaba?
Do we have anything on there for the water slide?
Yes, there is, there's something, I had a look down. So yes, as far as the building that we inquired with the water slide, there's funding on here to do, I guess, an assessment of the building to see what in fact we should do, there's some money aside to do some work to that building. Do we want to rehabilitate it, to lease it out, to, or I don't know, do we want to tear it down? Do we want to, and then we have a plan and with the consultant that we use, and is coming up some options which will come back before council as to what do we do with the pile of dirt? Do we incorporate something into it? Do we remove it? Do we, and so forth? But that is, there is funding in here for that.
Thank you.
Other comments? Counsel Neemeyer?
Mr. Manager, I'll just say thank you, your list sounds comprehensive, and I appreciate you presenting this to us as well as everything you do.
Counsel Dover?
Can we put some money so we can get this thing fixed?
Yeah.
I'm literally, it is like, I'm gonna have my ears are gonna be ringing when I go.
I don't notice a difference from over here, but I mentioned it to Mike, and he said they did notice it this morning. So it's got to be a fan in one of the units.
Can a WD forty or something, I, I'm, I'm easy to. It it it, it's very hard to hear you anyway, so thank you.
If everyone's spoken, I, I just had a couple. The CRMC application for sign sign installation and the right of ways on the beach side. I think there's so many of them, you might want to budget that as a engineering expense.
I think what we found, let me just chat on that quick. I think what we found when I researched that is we would have to do a, a separate CRMC application for each right of way to install it on the sand side of the beach side as far as an exit point coming off.
Yeah, so.
So.
It's 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 more work than it sounds like, so. No, they have to, specific. The state law changes to housing. I think we're a couple of years behind from all the all the legislative changes that were approved. And to get it into our zoning ordinance. I'm thinking the planning department needs a consultant. You've got the ADU ordinances, the adaptive reuse, the compliance permit applications, all these other towns have complied with.
Well, if all the other towns have, because every time they get an ordinance, they're changing the law again, as recent as this last July first. So it's all coming, I'm not disagreeing with you, because I think some of the notion based on the work they're dealing with is an additional staff member for that department to handle some of this, but would be presented in the budget. But I, it's all coming before you, I think, in January, all these major changes on the zoning side, it's the plan. So and we, keep in mind, we have a fellow planner in now till the following, the year from this October, I think it's twenty six.
If it doesn't have to be budgeted, that's even better. I'll let you go. The last thing I had was a shuttle, believe it or not, for the right of ways. Some of these right of ways, it's going to take a year or two to get open with CRM C processing. So maybe, so if we had a shuttle that that would be stationed at, say, Spring Avenue and brought you down a sand trail with a, with some type of ATV vehicle, an oversized golf cart, just something to throw out or think about. Counsel Healy?
It's an idea.
I'm sorry, I forgot two things. Would beach renourishment be a part of this, or would that be a beach renourishment or?
There is a line item for beach renourishment. It's not a lot, but it's it's a line for beach. And I guess you guys have to decide what the priorities are when you get to it, but.
Okay, and then the only other thing that I had talked about with Counsel Shalaba in the past was the idea of having bicycles down in, you know. I I don't want to see a bunch of bicycles all over the place, I'm not saying that, because everybody's gonna freak out. But in the summertime, having easy access to getting places might be really helpful for the town.
You're saying, because we had received, Mary had sent an email today looking kind of an update on, for like rental bicycles. When people go to the beach, I can take a bike and go here, you can go there. Or you're referring to bicycles, meaning like racks it right away?
And I definitely have different, different views. I think Mary's idea is great, but when I were to think about it, it would be less of a rental thing. It would be, you know, the motorized bikes that you charge at one place, you can drive it, ride it to Miss Quamiket.
Like you see in the city? Like you see in the city?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Julia has a lot of information.
There's huge marketing side of that, they have to be able to make money. I, again, I'm not, I think those things.
I've never, I've never done anything more than surface, surface level. So it's, it's just one of those ideas that I'm trying to think of how people can get there. And the shuttle kind of sparked it for me again.
So these are all suggestions and not prioritized. So these are all suggestions and not prioritized. The manager has, you know, the weight of the world on him with budget items that you've already spoken to, so if these can fit, it's, it's good. If they can't, then we'll talk about it in March. Thank you, thank you, Sean, for discussing this. Moving on with the agenda, communications and reports, liaison reports. Do we have any? Council Van Dover?
Last meeting, I forgot my notebook, so I just wanted to do a little talking on the EDC meeting. They're, they're still trying to figure out a marketing plan of some sort. They talked, they said they talked to other towns and businesses regarding incentives, things like that. The EDC did meet with the planning board, so this, this report kind of rolls over into that as well. The, the EDC is asking around town what, what the town wants, what do you want to see in the marketing package? So they are reaching out to the community to do that. There's just a, yeah, they're just trying to figure out how to put this marketing package together, together in order to market us for year-round businesses, pretty much in a nutshell. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? I, I attended the harbor management committee meeting last Wednesday, and they wanted confirmation of the Napetree Point Court action, and we'll ask the solicitor at that point as his reports. I'll move forward with town council, 11-325, anything on that mentioned? You get two reports today, Sean. I'm sorry, town manager and.
So the reports I have says the Veterans Day Parade is Saturday, and I meant to look it up before I walked in, but I'm pretty sure it's the usual time, 9:30 shopping center. 9:30 shopping center, Polka Duck Shopping Center comes down, so that's Saturday. Keep in mind, this is the parade that doesn't happen actually on the holiday. It's always the Saturday before, so town offices are closed a week from tomorrow, next Tuesday, on actual Veterans Day. So you have the finance director's report was the second one, is the quarterly report. If you, if you read through it, if you had the opportunity, everything's on track, our spending, our money we're receiving, there's, there's nothing overall. We're right on track of where we should be. There are some surpluses in some of the line ends, which is, which is a good thing. You have a letter of thanks from the Johnny Cake Center. Then also you have the report from the three-year projections, and this is really a chartered report that has to be done from the finance side, you know, to and also to the school. We share ours with the school, school shares theirs with us, and it's just projections. That's all it is. Obviously, it's up to the councils, what they set the rate at, what the increase in the budgets are, but based on just percentages, they're kind of giving you an idea of what the overall increases can be. And you can see the same breakdown and everything on the school side. Any questions regarding that? And then the three-year levy projections is the last page of it, which basically shows you where the rates were from 21 up until this current year, where the levy rates are and how they went down. You can see where it went from 984 last year is a mill rate to 711 because of a 37% decrease because the valuation went up, which was a question by Alex had the other day, because we were the one community in the state that had less revenue projections coming in. That's because we had increased revenue from other sources other than taxes. And lastly, I just want to let everyone know, and I, I see Mr. Palazola is still here, so I'll just figure it'll make his day if nothing else, but so the A-10 right of way, 525 Atlantic Avenue right of way. So that's the one we've been talking about that's overgrown, it's on private property. We had it surveyed, we couldn't get it surveyed because the owner of the property is privately owned, but it's a town right of way, and it's a CRMC designated right of way. It's never been clear, so we have, finally had it surveyed. So it's all staked out and surveyed. We met CMC there to clear it, we filled out a CRMC application to actually clear it. And on behold, the, the final step before you get to the beach is a dune. The dune has grass on it, so we have to build some sort of boardwalk over the top of this dune, so we're not disturbing any of the vegetation on this dune, because that's what's protecting the vegetation. So in any rate, we're working through that to see what options we have and what the cost factor involved in this walkway is. But we are going to mark it with a granite column and a right of way sign and paint the crosswalk going across Atlantic Avenue. So if you drive down Atlantic Avenue, wherever you see a crosswalk, for the most part, is usually one of the right of ways. So that's the update on that. And that is going to get done now, so.
Any, any councilors' questions of the town manager's report? Hearing none. I skipped over the town council report. Is it any, any questions on the town council report? Okay. Town Solicitor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. In response to your inquiry about the scheduling of the hearings on our Napetree Point case, just this past week. We, as you know, the court has been kind of looking for a date to get it scheduled. The court was available and the parties were available. I had a scheduling change that occurred this past week that opened up November 14. I informed the clerk. I thought the judge knew that on the other side, and the clerk got back to us and can schedule it for November 14, so it'll go forward on November 14.
Which, which court is it?
It's Judge Taff Cottis courtroom right here, in Washington County.
Washington County?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, town clerk?
Nothing to report.
Thank you.
Our president, a motion to move to 9G. I'd like to, 9F will be affected by me depending on what kind of answer I get in 9G, so I'd like to go to 9G first.
Okay.
All right, what I'd like to do on 9G here is, is be an ask of the town manager. I would like to clear the Niantic Ave right away till it's fully surveyed width and length. Is that all right? I mean, I just don't know how everybody feels about this. I'd rather not, if we need an agenda item or is, I, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to let it end at this, but go ahead.
I, we can clear it to open it, but I, I can't, I mean, I don't, in order for me to clear it to the boundary widths, you'd have to have it surveyed.
Well, it's been surveyed. I think, I'm pretty sure Niantic Ave's been fully surveyed. Am I wrong in that?
No.
I, I believe it has, yeah. It was a right of way for like 70 some years. I'm sure.
It is, but it has a mistake.
It's a mistake. The A-10 one, if you go down to the one at 525, there's stakes all along. It shows us the exact boundaries and widths of the right of way.
All right, so where's that?
Now granted, that one is, you know, most of the right of ways, if they're 15 feet, you know, we clear them to 10, you know, because it's a walkway. You know, Niantic, I have no problem, I guess, going down and we'll clear it, but I, I don't even know. I mean, I guess we'd have to look to see what the width is, but I don't know the boundaries. But if you're telling me now it's four feet and we open it up to eight feet, I mean, you know.
Could you, well, is that where we should go with this? Just pick a?
I mean.
I'm looking at.
Open up to access it. I mean, I don't, I mean, keep in mind Bluff Ave, which is the one at the top of Lockin. I mean, that's, I think, 33 feet wide.
No, we don't need 30. I think it's been surveyed. What is it? Does anyone know what it is? Maybe? Mr. Palazola, do you know how wide Niantic Ave is supposed to be by any chance? I'm going to guess like 10.
Could be 40 feet wide.
But if we, if we, we already been told the CRMC side, if we clear it to allow vehicular access, it requires a CRMC.
I'm not worried about vehicular access. I just, it's been grown over. I just wanted people could walk down there and not have it keep croaching in, so is, is eight feet good? Eight feet or 10 feet would be fine with me, Sean.
That's, that's fine, but does the town maintain all right of ways currently? And they maintain pedestrian access? And then some have emergency vehicle access?
Some do, so you have, you have Everett, Manitok, and this questionable, though the west end of Atlantic is actually a right of way, or it is a dead end, but there is an access point that is maintained for vehicular access. And then the breachway end, breachway alongside the breachway is maintained for vehicular access.
I don't need to clear it for vehicular access. We could always, you could always get out of Manitok. I mean, just stop the overgrowth there, yeah.
So, so I, I'd be concerned with conforming with the CRMC on that, you know. Council Healy?
I don't know if this is a request for town manager or town solicitor, but we had the permanent housing committee on our agenda today, and I had talked to you guys about this when we first brought this forward. Can, how can we change this name, permanent, in the name of a, we, we could just have it be the Westerly Housing Committee? Can, like, do I need a piece of paper? Can I have a vote? Like, what do I need to do? It looks a little crazy to see permanent housing.
If I, if I may, Mr. President, I'll check and see if it's by resolution. You amend the resolution. That's all we need to do.
Okay, yes, if you could find that out, that would be amazing. And then the only other thing I wanted to say is exactly what Sean said. The Department of Revenue put their new report out, and we're talking budget, so I know a lot of people get a little nervous, but there's a specific percentage that if each town goes over the, is 5%, 4% and that you end up getting, you know, there's issues there. I mean, we're the only town with a negative, so our percent change was negative 0.77% or $611,739, where you see other towns going up as high as 23 million. So I know that a lot of that does come from funding, but I do want to, I know the seven of us sat in that room and really wanted to go by what finance and Mr. Lacy put together, and we worked really hard to keep the numbers as low as we could, so I felt like we needed a little bit of a shot out there.
Good news. Any other comments, requests, item G of the manager?
I have one, actually. When I was walking around down in down there in Watch Hill off of Bay Street, I came across a sign, and it said Historic Cemetery. And it's kind of bent like this, and it is, so I traipsed in there. And there are, in fact, tombstones in there. It is totally overgrown. It is, yeah, it is, it is not been maintained, briars, what have you back there. Is there something we can do? I mean, who's responsible for that? And I'd like to see it cleaned up. I mean.
I can, I can give you the answer to that. There's Historic Cemetery Commission appointed by the state. It has nothing to do with the town. The only thing we do as a town is we do them the favor, because it's a volunteer group. When a guy by the name of Larry calls me and says, hey, we cleared Historic Cemetery 12, to say, and he said, we'll put the brush out by the street, can DPW come and pick it up, and we pick it up and dump it. We don't get into clearing it. It's the state's responsibility, not ours. But the only thing I can tell you, it's a very good group. It's all volunteer, which is crazy if you think about it, but if you, where is it? Tell me the number and tell them, they will go clear it.
If you're coming down into Watch Hill, from Watch Hill Road, you know, and the there's a, okay, there's a road that goes off to the right, right before the bend, and I'm sorry, I really wasn't paying that much of attention. I should have got the name of the road. So be, right before that, there's a house, and then there's the lot where that, it, where that historic cemetery, it's like right out of that little bend.
So Watch Hill Road turns into Wauwunet.
To Bay Street, right?
To Bay Street.
Okay, so I don't know where it changes, but so there's.
At the stop sign, it changes to Wauwunet.
Okay, okay, so keep going past that. We're almost down into the, to the, the village. It's, it's so right before you get, you know, the antique shop that's in, in Watch Hill, the one on the right? Okay, right before that, there's a road. And it goes, I, I'm sorry, Foster.
Should be Forstichole.
Foster Pond. Right before that, there's a house, and then right before that is the cemetery.
The right or left?
And there's two stone walls that go on either side of the cemetery.
Right or left side?
It's on the right-hand side.
If I go down in, it's on the right?
Yeah. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty, you know, a lot of the stones are broken and stuff, and, but you can, you can see them.
I can check it out.
Mr. President, I think also, if I'm not mistaken, there's a town ordinance, because there's a lot of privately owned historic cemeteries on private property. I think we did an ordinance a while back that the town may provide like 50 bucks reimbursement to people, I, I, I think. I, I think it's there. I remember seeing an ordinance, this was probably six, seven years ago, I think we did that. I don't know, but I, I thought there was an ordinance on that. If they, they can like a reimbursement type thing up to 50, I think it's up to $50 if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong, but.
Can, can we reach out to Larry? Whoever Larry is. I mean, I'm even happy to help.
But if I put in my email, I'll find it. Larry's the guy.
They're, they're, they're pretty cool to go in there and see. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I, I've been seeing a lot of, hearing a lot of complaints about the internet service, Verizon and Cox. Is there anything the town can do? I mean, last Thursday, the whole town was out.
Yeah, we, and I have Verizon myself, so believe me, I, I have no service in here, but we have tried, we reached out, you know, to the point where the businesses down in the beach area in the summer months, their credit card machines, you know, they're running off wireless. They can't get transactions to go through, which is problematic for a business, because someone doesn't have cash, which most people don't. And then they can't make the sales transaction, right? So I can, I can look into it again, but I know it is a problem. I definitely know it's a problem. I don't again, somebody told me AT&amp;T was better, but then somebody said, no, they have the same problems. I don't know if T-Mobile's any different, there's only three of them, but I can, I know it is problematic. I've experienced it myself.
If there's anything that we can do as a council or town, I would suggest, yes, Council Healy?
If we're talking about on October 20th?
About last Thursday?
Yeah, it was, it was a global outage. It wasn't just us. It was the Amazon Web Services outage. So everything, everything went down. We, I, even though I'm municipal, we, our work halted. And a lot of it does have to do with the shutdown, so if Westerly residents are listening, it wasn't just us. Unfortunately, it was everybody, and actually, our most local Amazon distribution center shut down for the first time since it's been open.
That might be the 20th, or this was the 30th, and it seems frequent that we're losing internet. I'm, I'm getting enough complaints about.
I agree. I, I totally agree with you. It's, it's frequent. That was an outage that, you know, Alex mentioned, but it is, seemed to be more problematic, especially with Verizon, so.
Yes, Council Shalaba?
Sean, just doing a quick Google search on what Council Van Dover said. I think it may be Historical Cemetery Number 7.
I'll look it up on the map before you leave, and I'll, I'll identify it clearly.
That's it for requests of the manager, requests of the solicitor, if there are any?
I just have one question for him. The November 14 hearing in Washington County, do you know what time that's going to be at? And, or will we get a notice before it comes around? Because I may like to go to that.
Sure, I'll send a note. I'll remind everybody, courts, the courts convene at 9:30. You get reached whenever, depending where you are on the motion calendar.
Okay, so it's kind of like show up and wait?
Wait, you may be, depending on the status of the other motions, you could be early, depending upon the status of the other motions, if they're lengthy. Could be later.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Also, just to remind everyone, that CRMC hearing continuation is tomorrow night at the senior center, 6 o'clock, senior center tomorrow night.
Thank you for mentioning that.
I have a question on that. Is there going to be any audio? I mean, people are, were concerned about not being able to hear them or hear them online. Do you know?
I can just say that CRMC went down, did a tour of the site, to bring all their equipment in to set it up, so it should be.
Thank you.
They won't have this thing behind them when they're trying, you know?
Okay, if that's it for solicitor requests. Moving on to citizens' comment, this section is allowed, is five minutes for any, any subject to be discussed. We do?
I have no agenda referrals if anyone else.
Agenda referrals?
I have none.
Thanks. Alex? Yeah. So agenda referrals, there are none? And that's why I'm looking at the council. Moving on, citizens' comments, this portion of the citizens' comments can be on any s- subject. Uh, citizens have five minutes to speak. Please uh, tell us your name and address. No one on the sheet. So anyone in the audience, uh, council? Mr. Palazzolo?
Anthony Palazzolo, North St. Injunica, although I am a property owner in Westerly. Still not licensed to practice law in Rhode Island. Nothing I say should be construed otherwise. I understand that ignorance is bliss. I understand it's easier for you to sit there and abdicate your responsibility to oversee your staff. But what I call unprofessional is doing exactly that. For five years, I've watched the majority of this council sit back and engage in Kabuki Theater pretending that Sean Lacy and Bill Conley are all you need to know. Just let them do whatever they want. No oversight. And what have we seen? What do you know about this? And by the way, thank you for trying to gaslight me and everybody into thinking that I'm the only one who's concerned here. This discussion begins and ends with the fact that on November fourth, twenty twenty-four, seventy-five percent of the voters took the extraordinary step of stripping you all of the power to surrender any interest in rights and ways. That is extreme. And they did it because this council has a history of abdicating its responsibility, preventing people from getting to the shore. And you're doing the same thing. I don't care if you don't like what I have to say. I challenge any and all of you to point out any insult of profanity that I used tonight. I gave you facts and you just don't like them. And I understand it's tough to be in this position. After a full year of you deferring to Bill Conley and Sean Lacy over there, you're about to get served some, some, some tough medicine. And you're going to look around for a scapegoat and you're going to want to change the, the subject. Oh, Palazzolo, he's mean. In the meantime, we're losing rights in a breakneck pace and that is going to be on your shoulders. Did you know for the last several years, Gerald Petros has been writing these guys, saying that Manitok Avenue is a right-of-way, but it's only the hundred feet that ends with the pavement? So the first four hundred feet or so is totally private? Yeah, you got a state right-of-way. Nobody can get to it. Did you know that was going on? Did you know Sergio Chrenzio over here filed a survey that showed that a big triangular portion of the Bluff Avenue right-of-way is privately owned? Did you know that the town paid Al Diorio something like three thousand dollars for a full survey of that right-of-way? And he refused to sign it for years until Joey Cordial pushed him into it? And then when he did, he revised his plan and he noted what Sergio Chrenzio had to say, but didn't tell anybody. You have to read this stuff to know what's going on. You have to do your homework. Trying to let you folks know that the wheels are falling off the carts. So you finally take your responsibilities seriously and maybe do something about it. Now let's talk about Spring Avenue, since there is a hearing tomorrow. Mike Rubin showed up four years ago and said, I found a map. This map says all of the roads on this map were accepted by the town of Westerly on October sixteenth, nineteen thirty-nine. Tom Legore said, I think it was Mary LeBlanc here. May I please have, this is my app request. May I please have the records of the Highway Commission and Zoning Board in nineteen thirty-nine so I can verify that? Did the town accept Spring Avenue extension? Bill Conley said, nope, we don't have any documents. We don't have any Highway Commission documents. Ellen Kane asked, can I have, can I have Highway Commission documents? Jim Tarbox asked. Constantly told, we have no Highway Commission documents. Turns out Ben Weber and I discovered just a few weeks ago, the town has over two thousand six hundred and fifty har, uh, Highway Commission documents and they've all been meticulously um, catalogued by Ellie Derrick. It's on an Excel spreadsheet, searchable. It's got pinpoint citations to the documents that are in the drawer. And if you look at the actual map that was approved by the Highway Commission on July third, nineteen thirty-nine, it's two pages and it says it doesn't cover Spring Avenue extension. Four years I've been telling you this is crap and now we know that the information has been suppressed. That document is called M nineteen A Revised. You're all going to get copies of that. This guy billed over two hundred thousand dollars over the last four years within the belief that these documents don't exist. This is the kind of top information you need.
Thank you. There's no one else left in the audience uh, to speak? I'll go to council's response. There are any? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Own favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Bill, how's your mom doing?
Working the overtime.